Thank you everyone for coming to the meeting tonight. I have one agenda addition would be to add Bill Blumer. And whenever he comes in, so he's not sitting here. We'll take that up and it's a discussion briefly on the Spafford Cemetery and our legal right of way stuff, so.
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second, Dan.
Hold those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright, so is there any other agenda additions or deletions? Alright, I'd add for a motion with regard to the April twenty-sixth minutes.
Make a motion that we approve them, subject to any corrections anybody may have, but I don't think there are any.
Uh, is there a second?
A second, Dan.
Alright, is there any corrections or deletions? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Just note that I wasn't here, so I will not cast a vote on that.
Okay. You abstained.
I abstained. Wasn't my fault.
Alright, Cash, Highway Report, Road Commissioners.
Guy named Brendan, uh, had a discussion with him today. North Shrewsbury Road at the rail tracks by Carreras is gonna be closed Thursday and Friday from seven AM to three PM for work on the rail.
So North Shrewsbury Ri- right by Carreras?
By, just above Carreras.
Okay.
Um, just to put it out there.
The whole road shutting down?
Yes.
Thursday, Friday?
Uh, Thursday, Friday, they're gonna be working on the rail tracks. And actually, I forgot about letting you know about that. Thanks for bringing that up.
That's why you came.
Um, the other thing is, we need to discuss about the two thousand fourteen truck, town truck, the single axle, um, like do, probably oughta put it on Craigslist or something like that to see if we can move it.
But that's somebody who was looking at it.
Yeah, but there was one thing it didn't have on it and they needed it, so.
I'm making a motion that we authorize the road commissioner to place the used truck on Craigslist to get the best buy for it that he can.
Second, Rick? I did. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Alright.
Do we have a proxy price that are your?
I think it's up to you. We don't know how much it's worth.
Yeah, okay.
And I think that you should.
Yeah.
Follow up.
The other thing I had was what we just talked about, about the grader and corolla road, I do, we, I do think we had enough. We'll discuss that per, um, just an update. We had a meeting on the Cold River this morning at the bridge on Middle Road on the berm removal. Um, the contract that they put out from the state was quite vague. It wasn't actually fair to kinda like receive bids on it. Because they really, things have changed a little bit and I, how do I wanna say this? They basically should've did more site work on the proposal.
So it wasn't writ- written clear enough for the scope of the project?
Correct. And I actually walked it today with one of the contractors and he totally agreed too. So we're.
Are they gonna re?
They might. They're gonna revisit that.
Cause I think I saw somewhere that bids are due, what, in thirty days or something like that?
Yep, yep, approximately. I can't remember that exactly.
A little, I think a little less.
Pardon me?
Are they giving you any time limit or?
Well, the other thing is this project needs to be done because of the grant money.
Yeah.
They need to do it, get it done. So I don't know what part of the scope there. I actually made two phone calls, one to Nancy and one to Josh Carver, all the river management afterwards. Had quite a lengthy discussion with them about somebody better, if they're gonna do it, they better get everything in order so it's fair bidding for each contractor.
Um, as a side note, has the other end of things that constantly has come up here as far as the water situation, has that been?
In progress.
Is it?
Yeah.
Is it gonna be resolved as far as you can tell?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, everything's tested out and stuff on that part. Um, the other thing I got is I got a call from Casella Waste today about the transfer station and our metal bin. There's either one or two refrigerators that got put in there, was still free on in them. There's a couple tires and also there's a settling or a uh, patrol, uh.
Propane?
Propane tanks that got put in there, which cannot be in there whatsoever. Um, they're actually setting up the, on Gleason Road right now and I told them I'd just probably go pick them up. But I had talked to, I actually called Mark Shea, was it?
Yeah.
And we had a little discussion today about and I asked him about like, and that includes air conditioners, the dehumidifiers that had the freon in them. Anything with freon or such a gas like that, that we need to figure out, do we accept them at the transfer station? And if we do, there has to be a charge, cause we have to actually ha- hire somebody to come in to draw them down.
I thought we always never took appliances.
So there's been a, and I didn't realize this, that I've been crushing appliances and
Yeah, I.
Stuff like that.
Other than what can go in the E-Waste bin, like computers and TVs and things like that that go in the building?
Right.
My understanding was we do not take electronics beyond that, or appliances.
Anything that's got freon in them.
Correct.
So, and I know it's been past air conditioner and stuff like that, whether the freon's on them, I don't know. Um, so we need to probably address it with the personnel at the transfer station to really.
And I would say some signs probably need to go up if they're not there.
That we don't accept any of them products. There are, anybody wants to get rid of that stuff, they can take it to Gleason Road. There'd be a small fee for it.
Yep.
That's where, that's where we've always told them. Now, I wonder why all of a sudden because I gotta go here tomorrow.
Sounds to me like you need to have a conversation.
Yep.
Find out what's going on. Unless somebody's sneaking in, throwing stuff in.
No.
Okay. Okay.
And that was most, most of the time for us when Bob and Al were over there. Al was pretty, uh, Milo, he was pretty rigid with
Yeah.
Stuff that was thrown in there.
Mm-huh.
Maybe, Tom, we'd better update those boys.
Yeah, and I don't know if you wanna do with some signage of some sort, that no appliances are freon or accepted or something like that, or any gases.
Yeah, I mean, that's what should be over there.
Yeah. And put it right by the middle, metal bin.
Yep.
Um, can we contact, uh, Casella's Waste to see if they have any signs, Katie?
Yeah, yeah. I made signs before, like I just typed them up.
Yeah, but I, they have, they have colored lettering and stuff on them.
Yeah.
That are metal.
Oh, okay, you want metal.
There's actually a sign over there, I don't know what it says, I don't remember. It say metal on it or something or?
I would say there's not, let's just have you do some research tomorrow when you're over there anyway and have a conversation. I don't think we need to belabor this tonight.
Right. But I thought I'd bring it up to the board.
I get, no. But I, I mean, the reality is we don't accept, so if we've gotta add signs, we'll just add signs. It's not, I mean.
Yeah.
That's.
Yeah.
After the hours of the, of North Shrewsbury Road?
Seven AM to three PM, Thursday and Friday. And we, uh, hopefully got all the potholes that were pretty bad on the tires, finish it up today.
Is that around town or?
Around town, except for, I guess I'm still in the truck, we're gonna fi- I'm gonna finish it up tomorrow morning down to South Creek Road the best I can.
What's the planning on blacktopping? Have you?
We're waiting for on, uh, the state on grants.
Okay.
At this time.
I saw the ripper was down, or is that just parked there from another project?
What's that?
Is that a big?
Oh, there's a machine down there.
Concrete ripper?
That's, um, probably, it's Tom Fuller called, wanna know about storing s- some sign trailers down here, cause he's working on Twin Bridges on seven.
Oh, okay.
So that may be part of that equipment.
Okay. Okay.
And that's about I have unless there's any.
Is there any word on, at all from the state on when they're gonna award?
Nope, and I actually talked to Tom Fuller the other day about, cause he's road commissioner for Danby and he hasn't heard that either. He said soon as.
I understand what they're dragging their feet for.
We're right into May already. Little May.
Oh, I tell you what, that, so they've gotta pass the budget bill in two weeks. I bet you, I bet you it's in that.
That's what it is.
Yeah. Cause in the next two weeks, they're supposed to pass the budget bill.
Supposedly some extra funding from the federal coming out.
Correct, yep.
What do you, what do you, uh, you also have a, uh,
Access permit.
Access permit.
Okay.
Speak to that.
The access permit for, I don't have, they don't have a nine-one-one address at this time. That is on East Clarendon Road. Um, there is a culvert required. I did the site visit and I talked to the contractor and the owner. And they're gonna make a different configuration, put it on a slant, so they're not actually gonna run the water through the culvert and down our ditch, they're gonna run it on an angle, so it actually disperses and sheets out into his woods because it's so flat there.
Okay.
And that is just north of Sun Store across the road by that big red barn of Godnecks.
I hope you're not creating a wetland.
And did you, uh, yeah, that's, did you say that modification's gonna work for the town then?
Definitely.
Okay.
Yep.
So.
Make a motion that the, uh, chairman approve the.
Sign.
Sign and approve the access permit for Raymond, I'm assuming it's pronounced McMorris.
Something like that, yeah.
Sounds like, it's a Scottish name.
On East Clarendon Road.
Second. Any further conversation? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright, anything else under highway?
Uh, that's about I have right now.
Anybody have anything for the road commissioner, any questions? Alright, Emily?
Hi.
I didn't scare you today.
No, not at all. I, I'm on?
Yes.
You're on.
Fantastic. Um, I'm Emily Burlett, uh, I'm, I'm Robert's granddaughter. Um, I am a resident of Airport Road and I visit, um, the East Clarendon Cemetery very frequently. We take my daughter there on walks, um, probably every night. And, um, I have noticed that there was an increase in trash that was being dumped in the east corner, um, of the cemetery. And, um, one of, the reason why it caught my eye is that when we walk our dog through there, I usually dispose of my dog's waste in the basket and, um, I discovered it all dumped in the back corner, um, from the bin in the back corner, um, of the cemetery. And if you look over that corner, the field, it was full of trash. Um, my husband works for Casella Waste and for Green Up Day. We actually took on the project, um, and we took a hundred and thirty-seven bags of trash and three truckfuls of additional items, um, that couldn't be put in bags from, um, the lower, the lower field and the bank. Um, we ran out of bags. We could not get any more of those green, green up bags.
Yeah.
Um, so we had to stop. Um, but it was brought to our attention because we did reach out, my husband reached out to Cecil cause we know that he was, um, the chairman of, of that committee.
Yeah.
Um, he gave us permission to clean up, um, but uh, Cecil's son Andrew also explained to my husband that um, apparently they've wanted to get a dumpster and their committee will not approve it and whatnot, so they've been dumping for years the trash, um, in the, in the lower field. Um, I, I, you know, as a, as a member of the town and somebody who, you know, frequently visits there. Also, you know, my great-grandparents are there, things, um, I just feel as though it's very disrespectful. Um, I'm also concerned about, um, you know, what's getting in the groundwater. For example, I did, uh, find several old car batteries down there. Um, there are several barrels of things. I, I don't know what was in them. Um, but just things that were very concerning. Um, a lot of it was old plant potters and things like that. I actually do have some pictures to share with you. Um, but I, I understand that it's not town-owned and, um, that, you know, it is privately owned. But I did wanna bring it to the town's attention that it is, it's a significant issue. Um, and, um, one of my bigger concerns too is there's probably about forty tires that have either, you know, I, I'm not sure who, I don't wanna accuse anybody.
Mm-huh.
Um, but I think that there might be some dumping that's happening after hours by outside parties.
Is there, is there a right of way down to where they're dumping?
There is.
A dirt road?
Yes, there is. So there is a fenced area that they have the key to, that they can then open and dump down.
In your opinion, does it appear that some of the, uh, dumping was actually done by people who utilized the cemetery?
Um, so I, I mean, I was a part of the Green Up Day, so I mean, there was, there was like household trash that was dumped, um, over the bank. There was a recliner, there was a bookcase, there was, uh, lamps, um, uh, maple caps, um, chicken fin- like chicken wire.
Yeah.
Just an array of things. So, I mean, I think it's a little bit of outside parties and caretakers and I, and I don't wanna point fingers, but the fact that they openly said, you know, hey, this is what we've been doing because we can't get a dumpster. Um, I, I'm just concerned. I know that my next step would be to make a report to the Agency of Natural Resources of Vermont. Um, I feel as though that's a huge, uh, you know, can of worms to open and I, I don't wanna cause any trouble. I just personally would love to see it cleaned up.
Whose property is that back there? It's not the graveyard, right? It's?
So apparently the graveyard owns the lower field too.
Oh, okay.
And it butts up against Bernie Corey's, um, land and my in-laws, the Burleets also. Um, you know, just, it, it's just, it's.
Do you have the pictures with you? I'd like to see that.
Did you find anything there with anybody's name on it?
I have not, no. So these were the pictures prior, and I only printed out a few, prior to Green Up Day.
Oh, Christ.
Yeah, so that is the back corner that you can, is visible to the public.
That's the east corner?
Yes, the east corner, yes.
Well, facing one oh-three, almost to one oh-three, like.
Pardon me?
The backside of Weeks' is gravel pad. I don't know if Weeks stolen that or not.
I'm not sure who owns that.
Gracious.
Now I know who you are.
Now, what we might be able to do is go to the sheriffs.
Yeah.
Because this is illegal. Big time and.
That, that mostly, okay, that was prior to our cleanup.
Mm-huh.
Um, I did take some pictures yesterday. Um, picture you of, I mean, this, so this is over the bank. Um, just tons of planters, garbage bags, you can see the tires.
Is there, um,
Good grief.
Where that access road is, is there a gate or anything, a chain?
Um, there is, yes, it is locked.
So somebody?
Some, yes, somebody's going in.
Somebody's got a lock, a key to the lock.
So the back corner is mostly, um, I don't know how many artificial flowers we picked up and planters, um, but there was that household garbage there. That lower field is more like, I'm gonna be completely honest with you, years of planters and trash and old cans and, um.
Tires?
I would hate to see when they have to utilize that lower meadow, um, what they're gonna dig up. Um, it's just, there's a lot.
Wow.
Let's see, this is totally, I mean, we've dealt with stuff like this with the potters.
Yeah.
And over on.
Oh, yeah.
Quarterline Road.
We found out who that was.
And we had the sheriffs come in and.
Did I see the other picture, Mike?
Huh?
Can I see the other picture?
And they had the, here, Cash. They had the sheriffs got started with it and, uh, oh, I think.
Well, I found the name.
Yeah.
When I went up there, I found who's, who's.
On the Quarterline Road one?
Uh, well, the, the one in, in Potter's Field.
Yeah, no, that was, that's a, the one on Quarterline Road is, we went up there, it was me, Bob Bixby.
Oh, yeah.
Couple sheriffs and one guy from the state. I don't know whether he was a cop or what, but anyway, long story short, we looked through a couple of the garbage and found out, uh, it was actually, uh.
You found mail, didn't you?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I found in.
Soon as we did that, then the state police contacted them, then the guy who was dumping up there was charging people and they did this on Potter's property too.
Yeah.
Was charging people, you know, that he had to bring it up to, to dump up in Rutland. Well, he wasn't.
There's gotta be some, something in there with a name on it, somewhere.
So.
That amount of trash.
Can we keep these pictures?
Of course, yes, please.
Here, Rick, why don't you, uh, mm-hmm, see what you can do. Rick is the liaison to the sheriff's department on the board.
I would also make a motion that we have Katie draft a letter to the, um, East Clarendon Cemetery Association.
Right.
Uh, stating that we have received this concern and it concerns us as well. And that we would hate to see this go to the next level and having a state agency get involved.
Oh, we, we might, in that letter, say that we are asking our liaison person to show these pictures to the sheriff's department.
I also have additional pictures if you need more.
Oh, that's good.
I wanted to, didn't wanna overwhelm you, better go out there, so.
I think, I think that's a starting point.
That's enough.
Um, um.
So you're making that a motion?
I'm making it a motion that Katie drafts a letter to the East Clarendon Cemetery Association expressing our concerns and hoping that they will immediately address the issue.
Mm-huh.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Alright, now, before we do that in discussion part of this, do you wanna add to that letter that we were also, um, contacting the sheriff's department?
Uh, so we know how we react to threats.
Mm-huh.
And that, I, I think the way I'm proposing it to be worded is a good starting point.
Let's see if they'll take.
And personally, I would like to see how that, my personal opinion is, is before we run to the sheriff's department, I'd like to see where we get with that.
And ask them in that motion, in that letter, to.
Please respond.
Please respond by the end of X, Y, Z.
Yep. That's fine with me.
And then, if there's no response, then we'll go to the next step.
Correct, because if, if you, I mean, there may be members of that association that don't even know what's going on. So if a letter can be drafted and sent to the whole association, that's gonna be a starting point. Bob, your, your wife's on that association, correct? So, I mean, that's gonna be a starting point as well.
We have a list of people then.
We tra- when we had to draft the last letter, I think we found out who some of the members were, so.
You do?
Yes, she's got it. How many are on it, Katie?
There's Craig Knapp, Cecil and Jackie White, Sam Culver and Joan Bixby.
Okay. So I, I'd like to send this letter and let's see what happens.
Alright, so there's a motion made and seconded, we had discussion, uh, lengthy. Uh, if there's no further discussion, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna abstain because I'm the member of the compensation.
Okay. Alright, we'll see where this goes.
Very well represented, Bob.
If you do, uh, notice any activity up there relative to picking a mess up, uh, contact Katie so that we know that somebody's moving forward with it.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you very much.
You have a good evening.
Thank you.
Take care, Ann.
You come and I go, huh?
Is there a story here, Bob?
He had that effect on people.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
Bye-bye, Ann.
Bye.
Alright, is there any other public comment? New business, approve L-E-M-P. I don't even know how that is. Uh, local emergency management plan, municipal adoption form. Speak up, Matt.
Anything changed in it, Matt?
Nothing, nothing's changed. There's a few technical little things, lips in it, they, the, uh, they still want us to, uh, RPC still wants you guys to, to do, uh,
Mutual aid?
Mutual aid agreement for the towns and I just kind of was.
Which we're not gonna do.
Yeah, I knew you guys weren't interested in, so I didn't even fill the paperwork out.
Yeah.
I didn't even know. I said, I bring it to your attention, but that's it. Uh, and there's a lot of appendixes, even add to, there's might be about twenty more appendus, appendic.
What are they?
Appendices.
Yeah, they can add to the thing, but I just kept it short.
Yeah, I think all the appendixes should be taken.
I, um, I know we have a new road commissioner since this has come up, but I would assume you are on board with the rest of us stating that we should not have a mutual aid agreement with other towns where they could come pick up our grader, pick up a truck, pick up and go use it in their town.
We will work with them.
Correct. That's what our.
On a need basis or something.
That's where we. Our stance has always been if a town approaches us and talks to us, that we would
Yep.
Work an agreement out, but we will not be subject to a state mutual aid, like automatic type situation.
We did last year when we had problems with the grader.
Correct.
We want our grader going up in the northeast kingdom.
Correct.
Right, and only has to be signed by the chair.
I'll make a motion, the chair sign it.
I'll second that.
And for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay.
The next one's pretty easy. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and approve the website domain name change to clarendonvt.gov, I believe, is what the final verdict was.
Yeah. Where the hell did it meet there?
I think so.
Seconded that.
Yep.
You made the motion, Rob?
Yeah, and I think Rick seconded it.
Mm-huh. Hey, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
That had to be signed by the.
Um, and I'll, so, so I'll make another motion since we already did that, just that the chairman signs this letter on behalf of the board.
No, I seconded that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
It's also important to note, I believe that's gonna be a free domain because it's a .gov.
Oh, nice.
Okay. Town Officers Report. Katie, do you have anything?
Um, I received a petition from Springer Law Office about, well, it's from T-Mobile Northeast that they're requesting a certificate of public good, um, for a modification to a wireless telecommunications facility at thirty forty-nine Quarterline Road. Um, so I emailed the attorney if there was any response needed and he said, no, unless you guys have any, um, like if you don't agree with us. But we kinda get these in the mail frequently.
I was gonna say, that's pretty straightforward. All they're doing is just altering the tower.
Yeah. Um, the other thing is, um, Gene Stone's letter was sent and, um, I got the receipt that they picked it up. Um, Heidi and I both drove by the Spafford Cemetery. It looked like the right of way was backed by the stone wall and it was like straight up and the piles had been moved, so.
So it looks like it's been addressed.
Yeah. Um, but Bill Blumer, we emailed back and forth today and he was gonna send more of a detailed response to my questions.
Okay. Good, that's good.
Is, uh, Kelly, do you have anything for us?
I do. Um, I sent the purchase and sales agreement for the Morton property. Um, it's just basically saying that you guys agree to sell it to Casella Root. Um, we have received their twenty percent deposit, so I have that here and we'll hold it until, um, closing. I've been working with Bill Blumer on this. He's the one who drafted it. Once I get it signed by, um, the chairman of the board, I'll take it and have either Joe or John sign it. Um, and they'll give it to Bill and we'll continue forward on our next steps. Um, because the town is selling it, we have to follow the state statute. And I think we have to do another notice of intent to sell, but this. and I think we have to do another notice of intent to sell, but this time saying, we intend to sell it to this person. Um, and then thirty days after that goes out, we can actually close on the property.
Okay, the, the buyer understands that as well, I'm sure. All right, so it's a duly authorized agent, that would be select board chair. That's what you're suggesting.
Yep.
So I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion that the chairman of the board sign the purchase agreement on behalf of Clarendon?
Second.
That's second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Let me sign that real quick. All right, I had that, I'll put that in the folder if you want it. Nice work, by the way. Nice work.
I'll copy that, Katie, I'll take that at the time.
Okay. Now, we were, uh, Bill said that he'd be in here probably prior to a quarter to seven, so let's see. I'd like to have this-
I don't think our executive session's gonna take that long, is it? So I would recommend that maybe now, and Katie or somebody can interrupt us if he gets here, but I would make a motion that we enter into executive session to discuss the personnel issue.
Is there a second for discussion?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Bill, stick with us. We're not gonna be that long, I promise.
Chairman, I'll make a motion that we come out of executive session.
I'll second it. Bob seconded it. And it was personnel, uh-
We gotta vote.
All right, is there, oh, I know that. Is there any, uh, objection to the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed at this time, um?
Mr., Mr., yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to close this issue that Katie draft an official notice to all town employees, ah, you son of a- um, to be signed by the entire select board regarding appropriate usage of the Greenup Day dumpster.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, Bob, Bixby, Rick, sorry. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, moving right along. Um, I asked Bill to come down and talk to us a little bit about that, uh, issue up at the Spafford Cemetery. Bill, did you do any more research?
I did some, yes. My file starts in two thousand six when there was, um, an effort to purchase or to transfer, I don't know, uh, I don't think there was a direct payment, but the, the town was willing to pay for some, uh, survey work to clarify the location of the, uh, easement and to purchase, uh, some land. I believe that, uh, some, um, burial sites had been put on, and this went around for quite a few years, and it came back up in, uh, I think in two thousand eleven or two thousand twelve, and there was never any ability, there were different contracts that were prepared, proposed deeds, but there never was a, uh, an agreement that was reached. Um, the board had memorialized its understanding of the agreement, uh, but, uh, in its, in its minutes, but, uh, the owners of the property, um, did not agree that that was, in fact, the, uh, arrangement between the town and the owners, so it kind of fell apart. Uh, I believe the town received a reimbursement for at least part of the surveying costs, and that was, uh, the last that I heard about it. Uh, there were some surveys prepared by Tinker Surveys, and, um, the, the plan was to, I think, memorialize and to get a specific deed for a, a thirty-foot easement that was, that run along the, oop, oh, well, uh, the side of the, uh, property, um, there's a stone wall on part of it, and it was supposed to go northerly from the North Shrewsbury Road up to the cemetery. Um, there's some evidence that this roadway has existed for a number of years, whether or not there was an actual easement. Uh, I'm not certain. My, I, I did a title search, I went back to nineteen sixty-three. Um, and there's references to, uh, a roadway, but I did not see specifically that there was an easement. So there may be an easement by, uh, prescription, which is the equivalent of, of adverse possession. If you use something, uh, long enough, uh, fifteen consecutive years, uh, you create a right, and in this case, it would, it would presumably be a public right because the cemetery is, uh, used by members of the public. It's not specific to, uh, an individual. Uh, and it may be that a hundred years ago or a hundred fifty years ago, there may in fact be, uh, an, an easement, uh, that was granted, but, uh, it, it may just be, uh, an easement that was created by usage. But the, uh, the deed for the owners of the property, which were Stone and Dazey, does reference, uh, a roadway that runs along the, the westerly portion of the property. So there's some, uh, deed references that would indicate that, uh, that roadway has been in existence for, uh, at least fifty years and probably a hundred years. Uh, so I, it would be my opinion that no one has the right to, uh, block or obstruct or do anything in that, uh, thirty-foot right-of-way that, uh, would impede the ability of the public to use it. Um, somebody might have a different opinion, but, uh, I believe that, uh, there's sufficient evidence to indicate that there is a public right to use that right-of-way for access and that the access should be kept, uh, open and, and unobstructed. So if that's the issue, that there's some obstruction in the right-of-way, I think that the owners can be, uh, instructed to remove that obstruction, or the town may be empowered to do something to itself and, and then ask the homeowners to, or the property owners to reimburse them for the expense that's incurred. So I don't know if that's the, the, the full issue before the board, but, uh, that's based on my review of an old file and, uh, of, of smattering of knowledge of what the current circumstances are, that, that's, uh, that's what I think.
Now, what I didn't know today, and just learned here a short time ago, I think you can speak to that, Katie?
Yeah, um, we did send a letter to the Stones asking that that would be, um, like, the obstruction's taken away, and I believe they have moved the piles and put the kind of driveway back to that, near the stone wall and straight up into the cemetery.
The, uh, when we started this discussion back in oh-six or so, actually, it had come up even before we had gotten you involved, but, um, glad that you're here, Bob, 'cause you can, and see what you remember. But what I remember was that, uh, moving what existed, which was not by that stone wall, we had agreed, and I think part of the discussion that, or information that you're, you have, we had agreed that if he built another right-of-way closer to that road, thirty-foot right-of-way, and the town allowed our town trucks to bring in material, he would, uh, put that material on the new right-of-way. It was not agreed, if he didn't do that, we said, no, then we're not gonna dance this dance. Is that correct? Bob?
Oh, yeah, back, uh, way back in oh-six, seven, eight, somewhere along there when this all started.
Mm-hmm.
But it was never followed through.
All right.
The, uh, and then he came in there with some other issues that were never even mentioned when we started, and that's where everything went awry.
And hi- his understanding was not the same as our understanding with regard to, uh, us hiring someone to, um, go out and stake the property boundaries. Uh, we were only gonna pay for that section, so moving the existing right-of-way from day one to the new right-of-way, then we agreed that we were going to survey what land he then had. But what happened was, he came back, and what started all this was, oh, no, you guys agreed to survey all his properties so he could subdivide.
Yeah, and that, that was never done.
And, and that's what started the, and then eventually, we did have those surveyors come in and did survey the upper property.
Right, Bob Tinker did do a survey of this thirty-foot-
Yep.
Right-of-way, and I don't think it was ever recorded because the deed was never executed, and there never was an actual contract, and then there was this little section, um, that did belong to somebody other than the town, and that was gonna be conveyed, and they were gonna reserve a portion of it where family members had been interred, and the, the, the town had a clear understanding of, of what, uh, its plan was, but apparently it wasn't the same as, as the, the landowner's idea, and so the, the, the deal was never consummated, and there never was a, a written contract, so, um-
The other argument, if I may, was that there was two burials on his property. But when we went up there and looked at the headstones, one of the headstones is, um, I think, a family member of that other name, DeBlazi or-
Dazey, yeah.
Yeah. And I don't know who the, you have a picture of that. Didn't you save a picture of that, Katie? Just to show Bill?
Yeah, there was a section that was carved out. There was gonna be kind of a square piece that was gonna be deeded, and then it was decided that there was this private burial ground for the owners, basically, and it was gonna be carved out, and they were, I think, maybe there was some talk about the town maintaining it, but they wouldn't actually own it because it was part of the cemetery. But I think that's the stuff that got kind of confused as to what people wanted and what they thought they were bargaining for, and-
Katie, is that the picture?
Yeah.
See, if you look at that, Bill, see the name on it?
Oh, yeah, so Louis, yeah, that, Dazey is the actual owners, and then there was a life estate given to the, to the Stones. Uh, so, I mean, there's, there's four people theoretically that have an interest in that, in the property. And I, I didn't see anything that would, I didn't know where the old location of the right-of-way was. From the deed, it sounded as if it started in the same place. It may have veered away from the stone wall. I, I can't, I, I don't have any knowledge of that, but the plan was to have it run right along the boundary line, thirty feet.
Right.
And there, that was, there was supposed to be a deed of a right-of-way along that thirty feet, and then a, a warranty deed for the section that didn't include the, the Stone and Dazey Cemetery.
So technically, correct me if I'm wrong, if he, we had agreed to move the right-of-way and all this stuff, but technically, he didn't hold up to his side of the agreement, so we backed out as well. But then, that means that that established original right-of-way is, he has just now moved it. If he, if what you're saying is, so he just moved his dirt piles over, and then, so he really didn't still complete what he said because, um, that's not, uh, not paved, but it's not, you know, have product on it that will support vehicles going up in here.
Well, but by moving, you're, you're thinking he opened it back up, right?
Yeah.
It's not that it moved. You're just saying that he opened it. He pushed the piles back, so it's back open.
When me and Mike went, you had to wind in through there.
Correct.
Now it looks like straight.
It's, it's opened back up.
Yeah.
Bob, I'm gonna go pick a riot-
I was gonna say, so I think, I think what needs to happen is-
I would say look at it and see if it's up to standard.
Needs to be looked at, and, uh, you know, technically, it wasn't this meeting, it was next meeting that they had to till, to address it anyway.
I think they had fifteen days.
Fifteen days.
From the thirtieth.
Be like next week.
So it'd be like next week, so we wouldn't have addressed it until the next meeting, anyway. But what I'm saying is, why don't we find out if it's been addressed? If it's been addressed, obviously, it's been addressed. But if there's still more that we need to do, I think Bill is telling us that we've got means to address it if we have to.
That's why I asked Bill to come down, to give us some legal, uh, indication of, as to whether or not to pursue something.
Yep.
If that's the case.
You can't really enforce any agreement because it's real estate, and, uh, the statute of fraud says it has to be in writing and has to be signed by the authorities, so, um, whatever the negotiations were, that's, I guess, the theory of the statute of frauds is that real estate is complicated, and so you've gotta have it in writing, and everybody's gotta agree this is the deal. And, uh, even though the town, I think, was very comfortable, it, it knew what the deal was, that the homeowners said it was something different, so I don't think there's anything that can be enforced from whatever agreements might have been-
But if you go in the other direction, that if it's long-term, if it's been used for a hundred years, there, the state has some laws that say, well, this is a right-
Right, well, yeah, it's, it's, it's case law, so that technically to, to create an adverse possession claim or a prescribed easement claim, it's only a court that can do that. You can, you can say, we have this right, but it, it, it's not, if it's not in the land records, then you really have to go to court to get court to say, this is a right that exists. Um, so, uh, ideally, you've come to some agreement with the landowner, and that was what, what the town was trying to do for many years, but if, if you can't, and there's something that's happening that's adverse to the interests of the public, uh, then you may have to, you may have to try to enforce it.
There is a document in one of these, because when we danced this dance a couple different times, and I'm going back into, uh, when Ralph Austin was the chairman, we had some other issue up there. Uh, somebody was trying to say they had a family plot or something, I don't know, but I can remember seeing something in, that was written in, like pencil or some fancy thing, that was ninety to a hundred years old, about that cemetery up there. And it's a whole letter-looking thing that's in one of those books in there, so I'm gonna-
It's possible that there, there is an easement described somewhere that goes across this property, and it may have been dropped from the description. Sometimes that happens, that, you know, the hundred-year-old easement isn't mentioned in the deed, and then everybody just tacks on to the previous deed, but that doesn't, the easement has disappeared. So if there is, uh, an easement somewhere in the land records, then that would, that would be clearly enforceable because then you've got, and you've got a deed that establishes it. And I don't know about the location, because it sounds like there's been a little bit of shifting back and forth, but, um, the, the best solution would be to go back to this survey and end up with, uh, a deed of easement, but I don't know if that's possible in past history.
Well, I would say we see, see if it's been addressed, and if, if it has, we can move on, but if not, we can potentially go the next route and pursue it. But I would say, if Katie thinks it's been dealt with, hopefully, going forward, it's a non-issue for a while.
I'll take a right-up there look, but-
Yep.
Well, I will, I will say this, uh, I did not have time this morning, but I did go by there, and there'd been some work done, and it's, like Kate says, it looked like we rode it right back straight, but I did not have the time to drive up there and pick it up.
So by the sounds, hopefully, let's hope it's dealt with and it's over with.
Yeah.
Bill, would you be, if, if, if necessary, would you be willing to, you know, if we find it, we have some more information and stuff, so that, uh, you'd be willing to take on this issue?
Sure, if there's-
If it's on-
Needs to be done, but maybe there isn't, but, uh- Sure, if there's, if there's something that needs to be done, but maybe there isn't, but, uh, if you decide you wanna do something, sure.
All right, well, anybody have any other question?
Don't think so.
Okay.
I appreciate it, thank you, Bill, for coming down.
Thank you, Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
Say you had a hot sun.
Yeah.
If you find some, let me know.
Maybe Wednesday.
Yeah, right. All right, Cass, you have any concerns?
Nope, I guess I'm off now.
No, just, uh, I apologize for the last couple of meetings and being late tonight, uh, hopefully going forward, I'll be able to make them again for a while.
Everything okay?
Seems to be.
Okay, good.
You know? That's all I have.
All right.
I'm all set for tonight.
Rick?
I'm good.
I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Good night.